Public comment is intended to provide citizens with an opportunity to address counsel directly. Generally, counsel will not respond to public comment other than to seek clarification of the matter raised and defer such matter to the city manager for review and resolution. So at this time, I'll open up public comment to anyone in chambers.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name is Troy Crenning. Currently, I live in Ward 1. After you all get done gerrymandering the districts, I hope that I'm still in Ward 1 come the next election. Two topics. One, the discussion about Mr. Adams and his criminal charge. He entered into a diversion agreement, and this concept escapes your city attorney, who apparently doesn't know what a diversion agreement is. A diversion agreement is not vindication, Mr. Garcia. It's not an acquittal. It doesn't mean that somebody is not guilty. A diversion agreement is an opportunity for someone charged with a crime to take a soft exit ramp and avoid a conviction. I've counseled hundreds, probably thousands, of people accused of crimes, some of them wrongfully. And oftentimes, I'll tell a client, "We're going to take a diversion agreement or we're going to accept a deferred sentence," because the evidence against you is so compelling that if we took it to trial, which is what innocent people do, if we took it to trial, the chance of a jury convicting you is stronger than not. And so, we enter into a diversion agreement, or we enter into some sort of a probationary sentence. So for you to sit up there and to tell your counsel that Mr. Adams is vindicated because he entered into a diversion agreement is a lie, and it's not truthful. And I know that you know better. And you know why I know that you know better, Mr. Garcia? Because two years ago, Mr. Garcia, you wrongfully charged my law office with a violation of some made-up campaign finance charge. Do you remember that, Mr. Garcia? And your office came to me after they realized that they were into it a little too deep and offered my law office a diversion agreement. And I respectfully told your deputy city attorney to kiss the posterior of my soul. And I took the case to trial, Mr. Garcia, into your Loveland Municipal Court prosecuted by you and your office. And after all of the evidence that your city attorney had and made themselves, made available to the jury, after about six minutes, and I round up because it was less than that, the jury came back and they issued verdicts of not guilty. Not guilty on all three of your made-up charges. Mr. Garcia, that is vindication. That means that there was no crime. That means that I was innocent, not a diversion agreement. You're welcome for the education. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers? Oh, does she hear?
Mayor, she is here. And if it's okay with everybody, can we just, I won't go over the whole speech again.
Without objection?
All right.
All right, I see no one objecting. Hey, Ashlyn. Would you like to stand up? Come on up.
If I say a few words first. All right, so Ashlyn, and everybody, I apologize for the miscommunication about the time. I am so glad you're here now, though, and I won't, I won't go back over everything I said because everybody knows what a remarkable job you did. I've already said what I had to say. But I wanted to tell you personally just how much your actions that night meant, not only to me as a human being, but as a police officer. You don't see that type of heroism and compassion at all, especially from someone who's 16. There was plenty of people there that could have stood up and did what you did, but they didn't. So your actions are exemplary. And please, on behalf of myself, the Loveland Police Department, and the City of Loveland, I would like to present you with this plaque for your actions and your bravery that day.
Ashlyn, 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 when you hold up for just a second, I think we have Counselor Sampson who wishes to address you.
Yes, well, actually, yes, I do, but hold on one second. City manager suggested maybe the family could come up for a photo.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. And then, yes.
Come on up front.
Thank you for being a hero, and thank you for being a person who believes in things being right and good and making the right decision, and that you put all of your effort forward, and that people will meet you where you are, and for standing up for those who are in need. Like, please don't stop, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Ashlyn, you want to come on up in the family? And Eric and Scott, do you want to join? Come.
I don't see one there.
Thank you, Ashlyn. All right, we'll continue with public comment. You want to give us your name and city of residence, please?
Yes, my name is Donald Jessick. I've been a citizen here in Loveland for 40 years, Ward 1. And I'm here to say thank you to this counsel. First of all, I'd like to, you may not hear that very much, you may not hear it very much today, I'm not sure. I'd like to say thank you for supporting our municipal court judge. She imposes a $2,000-plus fine onto a 17-year-old or to a 37-years-old just because it would be justified. The reason why: she knows what she's doing. Thank you for supporting her. I'd also like you, I'd like to thank you for supporting our city manager. Our citizens here in Loveland, when they turn on their water faucet, they need clean, abundant, affordable water. They flip on that light switch, what they need is reliable, affordable electricity. Our citizens need streets to be maintained, sewer systems that work, parks, trail systems to be maintained, upgraded, and enhanced. And that's what we've been getting since our city manager, Steve Adams, has been our mayor. So I'd like to thank you for supporting him. I believe he's been delivering to the needs of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment?
Stacy Lynn, investigative journalist, Laramo County, Colorado. What exactly is it that makes a powerful white man hit a woman inside a courthouse on camera? I'm sorry, could you start my time again? Because I--
Yes, and I'm going to ask--
Being interrupted is--
Yep. Go ahead and restart, please.
Stacy Lynn, investigative journalist, Laramo County, Colorado. What exactly is it that makes a powerful white man hit a woman on camera inside a justice center? What is that? Do you know yet? He actually thought he was going to get away with it, because for the past two decades, with the previous district attorney's office, he would have gotten away with it. He underestimated the new DA and the new rule of law, which is actually the rule of law in Laramo County. It's back. So he underestimated the law. But why did Steve Adams actually hit me? It's because he knows I have evidence of collusion and corruption that spans Laramo County, that spans 20 years. But what he doesn't know is exactly what I have. He knows I have some of the evidence, but he doesn't know what it is that is causing so much attention on Laramo County. Some of you, including Moses Garcia, are playing a dangerous game. Some of you know how dangerous it is, others of you don't. It's not just being played in Loveland. It spans Laramo County. One of the cases in this dangerous game started 11 years ago. It's taken 11 years for it to reach the courtroom. And before this year is up, that case will see the light of day inside a courtroom in Laramo County. And over the next few weeks, I will let you in on that case. 11 years. And it involves some of you. And in case any of you listening, or any of you up on that stage, have any crazy ideas about doing anything to me, like city manager Steve Adams did when he hit me on camera, you should know that external agents, numerous external agents, have the evidence that I have. That Steve Adams is wondering how much I actually know. Last time I was here, Moses Garcia lied. And I'm going to ask Bill to stand up, please. This man back here is my father, and the last time he was here, he spoke after he fact-checked what he was going to say. See how Moses thinks this is funny? He lied about this man after he fact-checked his comments. And I want an apology from Moses Garcia for lying about this man. And while he's thinking about how to say that appropriately on camera, because he lied about my father on camera, here's what you're going to do. The CGIA claim that you're facing because of Steve Adams, you had a 90-day waiting period. The reason you have a 90-day waiting period is so you can solve that case before it goes to court.
All right.
That's what you're supposed to be doing now. And I'll wait for you to apologize.
Thank you, Stacy. Is there additional public comment?
And actually, what he lied about was that Bill Cahill was fired unanimously.
Additional public comment, please?
Hi, Colin Bowman, business owner here in Loveland. I am from Vector Construction, and I'm also representing Eric Nordigan, who owns Nordy's Barbecue at Crossroads and Fairgrounds.
Sir, what, what was your last name?
Colin Bowman, B-O-W.
Tom.
Thank you. We are contracted to build a Starbucks in Nordy's vacant lot next to him at Crossroads and Fairgrounds. I'm making public comment tonight because of the Loveland Power and the transformer shortage that they're experiencing. The scenario there is, as you guys well know, to pull a permit and begin construction, Mr. Nordigan has paid over $160,000 in public improvement fees, and additionally, another $37,000 to Loveland Power to secure the transformer. Now, Loveland Power forces them to prepay these materials, any conduit being used, and for that transformer, before having a pre-construction meeting. In their disclaimers, they do say that the transformers could take up to 120 weeks to procure if they do not have them, which is a two-year waiting period. But once we have that pre-construction meeting, we've been informed that those transformers are on a first-come, first-served basis. In speaking with them, they do have two of the transformers that Mr. Nordigan would need to get power to this site. We have, you know, the next week, and this has been going on about a month since we had that pre-con meeting, and Loveland Power took about four months to produce us with a design to run a 300-foot line to set that transformer. The following week, we installed everything we need to, are fully inspected and ready for that transformer. Then Loveland Power turns around and says, "Well, until you have the gear on the wall, we will not install that transformer," in which he has paid for. He's paid his fees, and we've been inspected and ready for that transformer. The gear, as everything, is a, that's the electrical contractor that puts that up and orders that. That's been on order for six to eight months, and is a little bit out of our control as well. But the conundrum is, is that they basically are not providing that transformer that has been paid for. And if that transformer goes elsewhere, he will be sitting with a $2 million building on a loan and a corporate Starbucks lease without that transformer. Nowhere in that, you know, in Loveland's agreements, you know, do they, they give the disclaimer that they're not doing it, but it's paid for, they've confirmed it's sitting in their warehouse, and they're not providing to this job site, which I'm just here advocating that they do business a little more above-board on that and provide that transformer, because I would hate to see the action Mr. Nordigan would have to take, and furthermore, corporate Starbucks. So, thank you.
And I'll ask city manager, are you aware of this situation? I know we know about the transformers shortage, but are we aware--
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm aware of it. I have Kevin Gertie upstairs to make room for more people here in the audience tonight.
Okay.
But I think he can link up with a gentleman right outside. I know Kevin has spoken to the owner directly about this particular issue.
Okay. Appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Thank you. All right, is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Good evening. I'm Linda Breen, and I'm a resident of Loveland. I'm not a member of some group of rabble-rousers. I'm just a relatively new Loveland resident, and I started paying attention, and I am concerned. I watched videos of the city manager bullying and harassing and actually assaulting a journalist, and I read statements from other city leaders which do not appear to be truthful. If you have seen this information, you should be equally concerned, and I would expect you to take responsibility for properly handling misdeeds of city officials, particularly those who are your direct reports. If you have not seen the information, please, take your head out of the sand and do your job. The district attorney found probable cause that a crime was committed, and you are obligated to follow the laws and usual procedures for Loveland. Integrity should not be a partisan issue. It should not matter whether the victim of a crime has previously offended you, or whether she is even a good journalist. Bashing the victim is inappropriate, and it is disgraceful. Regarding those who disagree with me, who were at the counter protest tonight, I say God bless them, and I'm grateful for their peaceful witness. But as a Christian, I am deeply offended to see my religion publicly tied to corruption. Lack of integrity is not a tenet of Christianity. If we are so public about our faith, we must never use it to protect our cronies from the results of their misdeeds. Loveland is a beautiful, friendly, and peaceful city, and I'm sure this may well be a credit to you and to previous city leaders. I am grateful. Please, do not let Loveland descend into what has been called a banana republic. If you do your jobs without regard to protecting political allies, we can all be more proud to live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. You know, thank you, and welcome to Loveland. Additional--
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I saw Kevin Gertig out in the hallway. He's looking for Colin, probably.
Okay, yeah.
No, come on back. No, he, Colin, take a left as you go out the door. Kevin's right out there.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Fogel.
My name is Jane Collins. I'm a resident of Loveland since 1995. I'm a proud fourth-generation Coloradan on my mother's side, and I started my journey in Colorado Springs. Enough about me. Let's get to the substance. There are members of the Loveland oligarchy and those who do their bidding that are circulating a letter titled "Get Back to Business," attempting to persuade our city council to restrict public comment because, in these folks' own words, "we do not accurately represent our community." Moreover, the reporter Harold published our mayor pro tems, divisive editorial that was steeped in homophobia and misogyny. Only four days before the Domestic Terrorist Act on Club Q in Colorado Springs, these are the actions that have motivated me to be here for my three minutes. Voters at midterms locally and across the nation soundly rejected extremists and their attempts to force their bigoted beliefs upon them. Homophobia, forced birth policies, misogyny, economic elitism, and threats to our democratic institutions are no longer tolerated by a vast majority of Americans. Yet fascists do make the trains run on time, but at what cost? Yet our decisions, many decisions our council makes, do not even make it to the voter. Democracy is messy. The two hours set aside each month, one hour per meeting, and are rarely fully utilized, are for citizens to, quote, "peacefully assemble and to petition the government for redress the grievances," our constitutional right and one codified in the Loveland City Charter. City council members have pledged to uphold the Constitution and our city charter. I am here tonight to petition you to honor this pledge you made to the citizens of Loveland. Now, I'm going to pause, because I know, before anyone says anything, hey, the back-to-business folks are now revising their request as of yesterday. Oops. It was the first instinct, but I want you to remember, it was the first instinct of our current Chamber of Commerce president and two former city council members who are currently making bank off the dark money forces in our municipal politics to end public comment, to end our First Amendment rights, and to put city at risk for another no-win lawsuit. That is who these back-to-business folks are. Never forget. Thank you.
Counselor Fogel, your light is on. Did you have a clarified question?
No, I didn't.
No, okay, all right. Thank you, Jane. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. My name is Noel Breen. I live up in the Blackbird Knowles neighborhood, and I wasn't expecting to speak to anybody this evening, but accompanied my wife to this meeting, and I saw what was going on outside. I was raised to believe, and I keep hearing from my friends kind of on the political right, that the Constitution, or at least how they interpreted it, is somehow a God-given document. I agree. That's why I found it really disturbing, and really depressing, and really weird to see people actually in a prayer circle praying that the Lord will smite our First Amendment rights. That is the craziest thing I've ever seen. Now, I understand from others in this room that people have termed this place Banana Republic. Frankly, folks, up until this evening, I was innocent of even knowing anything about it. But I'll tell you something right now: if anybody's looking for a plaintiff in a First Amendment suit against a city council that wants to go over and limit public comments to where they really don't exist, hi, I'm your guy. Because honestly, if you don't have the ability of citizens to go over and petition for redress of their grievances, or in this case, maybe vent, you know, all you do is breed more resistance, more resistance. If you all have any doubt on my assessment, you can go over and see how those guys in Iran and China are feeling right now, because they created a riot by cracking down when they really didn't have to. And that's sort of what's going to happen, I think, of the longer haul, if you all go over and sit there and make it impossible for people to speak. I have no idea what the issues are, what the beefs are in this community with the city manager or anybody else, because frankly, for the past year or so, I dedicated myself to not worrying about politics much. But what I saw tonight is the craziest, most defensive thing I've ever seen, and to think that members in my business community are sitting there and on top of going, "Oh, let's shut everybody up." Well, that's asking for a boycott of your businesses in five minutes, seconds, or less. I mean, it just was the most mind-boggling, ridiculous thing I've ever seen, and it's offensive as heck. I didn't come here to be anybody's enemy or be an activist, but if I keep seeing the First Amendment punched in the nose, I'll be a problem myself. You know, to go over and use my faith in a hypocritical manner, to tell people to shut up after the right has been saying all year, Donald Trump says all the time, "We're being canceled." Well, don't be one of those people. Thank you.
No, thank you for being here tonight. Is there additional public comment?
Good evening. Linda Rosa from Ward 2. Let's get some data here. You may recall that I conducted an informal survey last year, measuring public comment sessions start to end, and the amount of time taken up by each person making public comment therein. I did this for council meetings from July 1st to December 31st. In a brief recap, public comment sessions last an average of 41 minutes, with the time citizens use to speak in those sessions amounting to an average of 26 minutes. Counselor questions, counselor questions, comments, and waiting for people to get to the podium accounted for 38% of the public comment sessions. Now, 26 minutes. I can't imagine any counselor would think this is an onerous burden on council time. Moreover, it suggests that the back-to-business people, the people who are making wild claims about public comment hijacking council meetings, are either not aware of what happens in a council meeting, or they have dubious motives. When the public speaks, each person brings something to counsel. We may not agree with what they say, but that person is a citizen, representing a citizen's views with the right to have their say. I lived six years in a highly repressive country that had no freedom of press, no freedom of speech, and that experience made me thankful to hear all public comments, the boring, the annoying, the wrong-headed, all of them. They are proof that freedom of speech and the right to redress grievances is still with us in this council. Although, counsel, we have learned recently that according to the city charter, council also needs to allow public comment in study sessions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Is there additional public comment?
Here, baby. Hon. You are all free to pet him if you want to, but you pet at your own risk. He does drool when he is shedding, and seeing as the fact that he just got out of the Humane Society after I was so rudely arrested. It's like, yeah, he's a little excited, just got out--
Yeah, let's have, let's get started. Yeah.
Sorry. Colin, come here now. So, I'm Nina, obviously, remember me. Now, here's, here's the fun part.
Counselor Fogel is asking for your last name?
Nyquist, N-Y-Q-U-I-S-T.
Thank you.
And I was residing at the, what they now call 990 South Lincoln or King's Crossing, but see, a couple months ago, it was actually like 840 South Lincoln the address was, and now, all of a sudden, it's changed to 990. So I don't understand that aspect of it, but either way, the fact of the matter is, is that my entire home was just demolished on Friday, and I was arrested for living after being told by a couple officers that they were going to see me on Friday, and I was waiting for Doug from 137 to do the Spadat thing for housing, so I was waiting for him where he knew I was going to be at. And, yeah, so I was the only one arrested. My entire home was demolished, destroyed. My bikes, as well as my boyfriend or husband's bikes, were crushed in some sort of a machine. I was told, it's absolutely not, there's more garbage or destroyed stuff all over the place than what it was when we actually were living there. I was also told that there was some other workers that were not necessarily city workers or were city workers or were hired by the city to do the work, were picking through my belongings for what they wanted to take for themselves, and was told, oh, it's only going to go to the dump anyway, without due process of law. I have yet to go to court to prove whether, you guys have yet to prove that I was illegally camping in the first friggin' place, let alone that I was trespassing, and mind you, even Officer Aiden can attest that I had signs outside my camp since we lived under the bridge with protesting signs, saying that we were protesting. And in fact, the protesting sign said specifically that we were going to protest the treatment of the homeless by living our lives peacefully. And then you closed the park after that, and then tried to give me trespassing tickets after you illegally closed the park, and the only form that I had getting it out, I wasn't trying to make big scenes, I wasn't trying to make big, you know, riots or anything like that, I was peacefully protesting via a sign, doing it as nicely as possible, and the only form that I had getting that out was-- And the only form that I had getting that out was in that park. Closing down that park is illegal because it violates my First Amendment rights as well as the rest of those that were there. Now, the harm that was caused to me alone just over this weekend was so extreme, my blood pressure is normally 106 over 59. It was 140 over 80 plus. Okay? He was taken into custody and put into the Humane Society for no friggin' reason. None. His food was thrown away. I have nothing for him and I have nothing for myself now. And I still have yet to be proven guilty of illegally camping. Remember, I was abandoned down here after being human trafficked here and after almost being killed in your park, and nobody did anything then. And the third-party harassment by Steve Adams is ridiculous and actually violates your deferred sentence agreement, using deadly force to harass homeless individuals because of their disabilities.
Nina, your time is up. City Manager, I don't know if you're aware of this situation, but...
Of course he is. They answer to him.
Yeah, Nina, your time of speaking is up, but City Manager, I'm turning...
Madam Mayor, we're aware of the situation. We'll be happy to provide you and Council, which you'll be receiving an update on this.
All right. Thank you.
The number of people displaced is extreme. And it was a place where the community came to get resources, not just where I lived.
Thank you, Nina. Appreciate you being here.
And I had a door, an actual door. Ask her, she knows. An actual door.
All right. Thank you.
Come on. Let's go. You succeed at making him get lost.
Additional public comment, please.
I've got sweet slobber on my hands. That was very lovely kiss.
He's an amazing dog.
I'm Tam Paquette, and I've been coming before this distinguished body for over a year to make public comment on behalf of different organizations and whatnot. And tonight, out of respect to not fatigue these distinguished council members, I'm not going to go off of my talking points. I'm just going to speak from the heart. And again, I'm only speaking for myself as a resident of Loveland, very proud to be here and very grateful to live in America's sweetheart city. There are some things that have been concerning me. My education background is in political science and public administration with a focus on public policy. And I'm very, very proud that the city of Loveland is making efforts towards being more inclusive, diverse, more compassionate. A couple of months ago, I was here, I was present to see Loveland recognizing a proclamation for the LGBTQIA+ community. But it really broke my heart when recently a member of this body put a letter, a personal letter, a letter that should not be representing the city of Loveland from a seat of power, using the reporter Herald as a place to hold up a bugle and speak what I consider, and I'm a profound woman of faith, I'm the Social Justice Ministry Chair for my congregation. It felt very much like white supremacist Christian nationalist dog whistles, and it scared me. And within days, Club Q, we had another mass shooting. And in honor of those who have suffered or have been killed from gun violence, I wear orange in honor and respect for you. Words have power and they have consequences. And it's very concerning when someone who has the privilege of sitting in a seat of power abuses their megaphone. And there are people that will use what a leader says as a call to action. So as a citizen leader, I'm going to ask what I think are my employees, because when I vote, I'm literally hiring someone at the ballot box. So all the folks on this side of the podium are the employers and everybody up there are the employees. And your sacred duty is to ensure the public trust and work on behalf of the citizens of Loveland and not with your own personal agendas. So please be very kind, be empathetic, and be very careful with your words publicly and privately. Thank you.
Thank you, Tam. Is there additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Come on forward and give us your name and your city of residence, please.
Pedro Lopez, Alt, Colorado. Yeah, I lived in Loveland. I'd like to get back here. And it hurts me to see this town going downhill. And I'm here because I'm very disturbed by the suppression of free speech. I mean, this sounds like something you would see in one of those old socialist republics, you know, where they say, oh, you can comment, but you're limited to how much you can comment on. And this is not the way America goes. You can't just terminate the Constitution. We have a Constitution. We have a right to free speech. The City Council is being paid to be here. It's your job to listen to public input and make public policy based upon the needs of the citizens, not just the few citizens, every citizen. So do your job, protect the Constitution. And, you know, another thing I'd like to suggest is I'm glad faith came up in this discussion because, you know, it would also help some of you to study the Sermon on the Mount. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Sorry, it's too heavy to stand up here. Casey Mullins, Ward Two. And I truly do, every one of you sincerely mean, thank you for your service. It is appreciated, even though it doesn't feel like it at times. I happen to have been born into the LGBTQIA category of humanity, human, just like everyone else. It was never a choice. The choices I had were to accept it and be happy, or the alternative of suicide, or deny it and just live with the depression and self-loathing. That acceptance was probably the greatest struggle of my life. I have been disowned, run out of my hometown, beaten, bloodied, sexually assaulted, sat with dying men on AIDS wards, and even put myself through conversion therapy. Most of y'all know that didn't work, but anyway. I have a daughter and a grandchild in my human category. Don't worry, I didn't raise her. It wasn't me. I just turned 58 and have, for many years, observed how my rights have been impacted and my life choices influenced by people's acceptance or non-acceptance. Now here's the challenge. A leader of my town, city councilman and mayor pro tem, has an opinion published in the local paper stating in essence that God has dictated that marriage and sex and gender labels are only rights granted to a male and female, and hence God does not approve of my love, the way I express it, or my body selection of gender. In his public opinion, before my fellow citizens, he condemns me as a sinner who will suffer the consequences in the afterlife. Now, I'm a big girl and I've dealt with this uneducated judgmental belief plenty before. I can dismiss the hate speech as it affects me, but not all people can do that, and that's when I get really upset and disturbed. Language coming from my community leaders changes the past or beliefs that others had for themselves. So now I'm observing what impact these cruel public opinions have. A few days after his opinion was published, we had a shooting where people died. I do. One of the citizens apologized to the LGBTQIA.
Thank you, Casey.
Do unto others.
Is there additional public comment?
Olivia Lowe, Ward Two. Casey, I think you're going to be waiting a long time for that apology from anybody up here, unfortunately. I'm always offended when the majority of those on councils say they're tired of the rabble-rousers, the small minority of people that come up here and give us grief, et cetera, et cetera. And like people have said before, you're actually getting paid, so deal with it. But the fact of the matter is, it's not just a small number of people. I think y'all need to perhaps move into the 21st century. Look at TikTok, look at YouTube, look at Instagram, look at Reddit. Have you done any of that? Do you have any idea the number of people that have not only watched the videos but made comments? And I'm not talking about people from California. I'm talking about people from Laramie County. It is over 200,000 comments, views on all of those platforms. So yes, there will be consequences, and yes, people are paying attention, and maybe they're not here tonight, but they are listening, and you better believe they will be voting. So move into the 21st century and stop thinking you can get away with everything just because you sit where you sit and you know who you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Hi, my name is Debbie DeZuris and I'm from Ward Four. And I just wanted to make a suggestion. If three minutes of talk and an hour total is too much for you guys, maybe you should try coffee, a Red Bull or something. Wake up a little bit because we're going to keep talking. And if you go after the gay community, I will never stop talking because you're talking about my son. So, good night, y'all.
Thank you, Deb. Is there additional public comment from inside?
Yeah, Steve Lynn, Ward Two. Good to see you, Octopus Man. Always a thrill for me. Okay? I would like to direct my comments tonight to Mr. Overcash. Don, I think you are aware of a social media site called Loveland Politics Uncensored. I know you do. That's a rhetorical question because you posted a comment there where you told a citizen to seek help. Now, some people might think you're pretty powerful. I personally don't, but some person might take that pretty seriously. Now, I don't know what kind of help you suggested there, maybe physical, but this person that I know, they're pretty good, you know? They actually row on Lake Loveland. So given your stature, I think they could run circles around you. Maybe you meant theological help? We know you post, you know, your theological concepts in the paper. Maybe that's what you meant, that they could come to you for theological help. Maybe you meant, I don't know, sort of, I don't know, educational help? You could help them that way? I mean, you do top-line growth and you're with the chamber and you work with the downtown groups. Maybe you could help them there? Or maybe you meant psychological help? Maybe you could help them there? I don't know what kind of help you meant, but some kind of help, you know? And, gosh, you know, several of us thought, what did you mean by that? But anyway, looking at it, you know, our police force, they certainly provided help to people, didn't they? And our person Steve, they provided help. Interestingly enough, this person that you said needed help was a female. Boy, it seems to be a pattern here in city government that the police and our person Steve and you. Why is it that city government, people there seem to be providing help to females? And you know another thing about it? That this person was the person who just spoke. It was Olivia.
Steve, your three minutes is up. Appreciate you being here.
Amazing. Somebody who speaks out. You told her she needs help.
All right, Steve. Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Is there additional public comment from inside chambers? Is there any?
David Goldberg, Ward One. Thank you for giving me the right and the privilege as a U.S. citizen to speak my truth tonight, and all of us here. I'm going to continue reading from "The Invisible Rainbow." This will be a study regarding the effects of wireless radiation from broadcast towers and cell towers. In 2000, Neil Cherry analyzed the childhood cancer rate in San Francisco as a function of distance from Sutro Tower. Sutro Tower is almost 1,000 feet tall, stands on top of a tall hill, and can be seen from all over San Francisco. At the time of Cherry's study, it was broadcasting nearly 1 million watts of VHF-TV and FM radio signals plus over 18 million watts of UHF-TV. The rates of brain cancer, lymphoma, leukemia, and all cancers combined throughout San Francisco were related to the distance a child lived from the tower. Children who lived on hills and ridge tops had much more cancer than children who lived in valleys and were shielded from the tower. Children who lived less than 1 kilometer from the tower had nine times the rate of leukemia, 15 times the rate of lymphoma, 31 times the rate of brain cancer, and 18 times the total cancer rate as children in the rest of the city. Since I've been coming up here speaking for over a year now, still trying to move things along with amending our ordinance, and I appreciate that the process is moving, I haven't spoken much or there haven't been a lot of us who have spoken about the effects on children of wireless radiation. Is there really anything more important than that when it comes to this topic? Children have developing brains, softer skulls than adults do, and the effects of wireless radiation on them are much more profound even than on adults. So we have to be really careful with our children, do whatever we can to protect them. For example, in Loveland, there is a mega cell tower right on the grounds. It's either Mary Blair or Conrad Ball Middle School. That is just not acceptable. If we keep pushing forward to change our ordinance to make it safer, we have to stop situations like that where we have towers like that on our school grounds, and we just have to make sure that that doesn't continue.
Thank you, Dave. City Manager, remind me when this is coming before us.
Madam Mayor, thank you for the question. We are forming, we've had a meeting, in fact, today, I was mentioning that to Mr. Goldberg, with our internal working group. We have five boards and commissions we'll be having involved in this process, not three. There's actually two more that I've forgotten about. And we're going to have, the lead will be the LCAB for that. And so we will be starting to work with them on a series of presentations and information to get them up to speed. And then we'll also be working on how to incorporate that into the other boards. So we have a plan that we'll be bringing to council to share with you on the timing so that you know what is the plan staff has, get feedback from council, and then move forward. forward, so.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that.
We're expecting to be in front of LCAB starting in January.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fogel?
David, I'm sorry I have to ask this question, but can you give me some kind of a correlation between what 1,000-foot television transmission tower broadcasting in the 2 megahertz range has to do with 5 gigahertz cell transmission?
The, my understanding is the radiation that is coming from those TV broadcast towers is very similar to the radiation being broadcast from cell towers. And I'm not just talking about 5G cell towers, I'm talking about 2G, 3G, and 4G in a, which are in a frequency band that is not that different from those of TV broadcast towers.
Just a heads up from my knowledge from working with the FCC, 2G has been decommissioned almost nationwide except on Indian reservations, where they haven't gotten the availability yet. 3G is down to about 25% of what it used to be. 4G and 5G are the proliferating technologies today. I only have one other question for you. Do you use a cellphone?
Councilman Fogel, I do not.
You don't not have, you don't use a cellphone at all?
I do not use a cellphone.
Good for you.
I did use a cellphone. I'm glad you asked that. One of the hardest things I ever had to do, but I do not use a cellphone.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Thank you. If I were you, I would take a look. All the information I just gave you is available readily on the FCC website, and that's FCC.gov.
Counselor McFaul?
Yeah, and this is for the city managers, seeing if there's any update on the changes to the cell tower up by the church off of Taft.
Near us.
Well, I drive by it every day, so I haven't seen a change in the tiles at all, so I figured we'd see if there's something.
Madam Mayor, I have Brett Limbaugh, our Development Services Director, somewhere.
Okay, Brett, are you around?
Somewhere.
Have him do out and come down here and give a PowerPoint update or an update to you on that particular topic. We kind of expected that to be here tonight too as well, so he has an update to offer to council.
Okay.
I also have just a comment for our manager, Adams. Steve, before we start taking this out to our boards and commissions, I think it would behoove us to double-check the current activity in the 10th Circuit Court regarding the FCC. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you for pushing us forward.
Is there any additional public comment from inside council chambers?
Yeah, Don Pearson, Loveland. I wasn't going to speak again tonight, but I agree that Counselor Overcash, who seems to have left the room, he doesn't like listening to comments apparently, should never have written that letter with his city title and preaching religion, his own brand of Christianity that he believes in, which seems very far right to me. But he could have saved a lot of comments tonight, too, which he doesn't like listening to, you all don't like listening to, if he wouldn't pull this crap all the time. He's just full of little tricks that he's playing. He's divisive. He causes divisiveness, division in the city, and I think he should be recalled once and for all, for the third time. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. All right, is there additional public comment from inside chambers? You just come on up to the podium and give us your name and city of residence.
Hello, my name is Alan Davis. I live in Loveland, Ward Two. This is the very first time I've come before council to speak ever, and I'm going to tell you why I decided it's time. I'm deeply disturbed by the fact that you might be considering limiting public comment even further. I think some of the things that have been done, like requiring video for people that call in, is very discriminatory to senior citizens who may not be technically savvy, and also for people that can't afford computer and video equipment. Those people are not able to call in and comment. I think you ought to consider rescinding that. Also, there's a definite feeling that many on council only represent people who believe exactly as they do. You represent certain people in the business community, multimillionaires, billionaires, people of your same religious persuasion. Now, I am a Christian, but I find some of the behavior extremely disturbing and hypocritical that I see going on in the comments that are made. You folks are elected to represent everyone, whether you agree with us or not. And I think that public comment is very important. You should be delighted that we come here and we speak to you, because there are many people that don't have the time to do this. They're busy working, they're busy paying their taxes, they're busy raising their family. But when you go out in the public and you speak to other people, you find out that they actually tend to agree with those of you, those of us that you, some of you have started to call the rabble-rousers, or the mangy coyotes, or so forth. The other thing disturbs me a lot is I never see apologies for any of these comments. I think it would be high time for some apologies. I think an apology is a sign of a person of character and integrity. That's really all I have to say, but I just wanted to let you know that I think it was time to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Appreciate you being here. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Hi, my name is Bill Jensen. I live in Loveland. And so tonight, I wanted to say that I'm the only son of an only son, and my only son is fourth-generation military. And when you enter the military, you take an oath to defend the Constitution from all of its enemies, foreign and domestic. And when I was 17, I took that oath, not really thinking what, how could the Constitution have a domestic enemy? And I'm standing here tonight looking at a local public body that wants to vote and make an idea that, or propose a vote, that you can, you don't even have the privilege to infringe on my rights. So, I just want you to bear in mind, especially the veterans here tonight, they need to critique the oath they took to defend the Constitution from domestic enemies. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Good evening, council. Jen Castaneda, Loveland. It's been a while since I've spoken to council, and there's quite a few reasons why. The main reason is that I'm nobody's circus clown. I don't come to entertain the masses or enjoy the condescending conversations that I've had to have with this council. To be quite frank, it's been disappointing on every level. Because when I started Loveland Justice League, I really believed that my city was that of integrity, that my city was here to do the job that they were hired to do, that my city was here to represent the people that they were elected to serve. That is what I believed. I believed in our democracy. I believed that our city may have some issues, but I believed that our city was capable of overcoming them. And I'll tell you what, two years into this, I'm beyond disheartened. I'm mortified. And the fact that we're having to throw a protest right outside this chamber again, out of lack of ability to do your job effectively, to represent, to care about the people that you are here to take care of, and to represent the city's best interests. Anyone? Anyone here representing the city's best interests? Because I'm not seeing a lot of evidence of that. And I'll tell you publicly, we've put out plenty of information that is contrary to doing your job or doing it effectively. It's also contrary to being honest, forthright, or having any integrity with your character, your ethics, your morals, your standards. I'll tell you what, Loveland citizens' standards are that we will no longer tolerate this corruption in our banana republic, Loveland. It's not acceptable. And I'm here to say, every single person who has voted to silence us, this is the fourth time we're dealing with this the last two years. That's disturbing. Our First Amendment right has been squashed on us that many times, just trying to get our voices heard about our concerns. Disturbing and disgusting, and each and every one of you who does not have the goal to do what's right needs to resign immediately.
Thank you, Jen. Is there additional public comment from inside chambers?
Hello, Kat McManus, District Two. I am a new Loveland resident. I moved here two years ago. I moved from Idaho. Idaho is beautiful. Colorado is beautiful. Loveland is beautiful. I've never been to Colorado ever in my life. I chose Loveland randomly, because I believe that this was a town where I could do and make a difference and be different. I've come to many council member meetings, and I've listened, I've watched, I've learned where you all stand, I've watched you, listened to numerous comments, and you all have done a great job. I appreciate what all of you have done. In the last few weeks, I have been morally disappointed in you, Don Overcash, with what you have posted in a public comment in our local newspaper, with calling the local newspaper. I asked them, how is that possible? How is it possible that you can say those things in a newspaper? You brought me to tears. You upset me for a whole entire day. You belittled me as a human, as a woman. You belittled me, a citizen, who moved here because I wanted to make a difference. I still believe I do, and I believe that all of you are up here for that reason as well. Accountability is what I'm asking from you. I'm asking you to hold each other accountable. Hold your city manager accountable? I don't know our city manager, but I know that he has been held to an accountable of what have his actions. I know I'm held accountable for all of my actions throughout my whole entire life, and I would really appreciate if you can start holding each other accountable for all of your actions, for the things that we say in our public forums, for the things that we do in public areas. I would really appreciate if we could start holding that standard a little higher, because I know you hold that for me. When I see you guys in public, I respect every single one of you. I don't disrespect any of you, because I believe that you guys are here to make a change for me, and when I don't see that, it's terrifying. It doesn't make me want to live here. It makes me look at my young family that I moved here, believing that Loveland is great, it has a great community, the art is phenomenal. I have opportunity to make myself something here. And when I see and hear these things, I don't want to live here anymore. And that's sad, because this is a beautiful town. You all have done so much work. Please, start holding everyone accountable. We deserve it, and you both deserve it. We deserve a better team. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kat.
Any questions?
Thank you, Kat.
Thank you.
City clerk, it looks like our timer is ticking down, but did we stop it when council members were speaking and asking questions? So we probably have a little bit. Okay, so we probably have a few more minutes. I think that probably takes care of everybody inside chambers. Is that correct? Nobody else? Let's go to phone-in public comment. Lindsay, do we have any phone-in public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Marsh. Users, if you would like to speak during public comment, please choose the raise your hand feature. Per council's policies, you must have your video on during public comment. As the moderator calls on the user's name, please accept the pop-up request on your screen to become a panelist. The meeting will automatically rejoin you as a panelist, and you may turn on your video and begin your public comment. You must be ready to accept the pop-up window request from the moderator when called on. User with the name Anja Wall Wells, please accept this request to become a panelist. Please turn on your video and begin your public comment.
We can, there you go.
Can y'all see me?
Yes.
Oh, interesting. I cannot see you.
We can see and hear you.
Okay, good. On my side, you are a profile picture. So, hi, my name is Anja Wall Wells. I use the pronouns, and I am a resident of Loveland. I have never spoken at city council. I started listening to a lot of the meetings when I moved here, feeling like being in a smaller town, it would be easier to get involved. But even though I am shy and don't really want to be on a camera, I felt like I needed to speak out tonight. My hope is that I will live in and help cultivate a city that listens to all of its citizens, regardless of any sort of marginalized communities that we are a part of. And like many of the people that spoke tonight, I didn't get a choice in which ones I was born into, but I still believe that my voice matters, and the voices of my community members matter as well. And I personally believe, and I hold myself accountable, and I'm in leadership positions, that I need to behave at a higher moral standard than I do if I am just a follower. And so I expect that of the leadership that's over me, which means I expect that of city council. So I was very disheartened to hear the comments that have been coming out in the newspaper and online about my LGBTQ community, which includes me, and also about anyone who is biologically female. We need to be respecting all citizens and listening to all of our voices, and if someone can't do that, then they need to step down from leadership until they can do a better job evaluating all of the voices in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Anja. Appreciate you commenting. Lindsay, do we have additional phone-in public comment?
Thank you, Mayor Marsh. I do not have any more users with raised hands.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment and thank everybody who came and who commented.